Call to the board of this city, city of Harvey's council meeting. Today is Monday, November 25th, 7:12 PM. All of the present council members, if you'd be so kind as to log in as present. We have a form. Next item. Our agenda is identification, flag, and pledge allegiance. A very important one is. Heavenly Father, mercy upon the gracious hour, we come to you saying thank you, oh Lord. In order that all things come through you, continually asking you for any blessing, your protection, your guidance, your mercy, and your grace. We thank you, oh Lord, for your much favor, because were not for that, we wouldn't have been able to wake up this morning, Lord. If you weren't here for nothing, you said your son, oh Lord, we would not have any of that grace or mercy extended to us, oh Lord, so that we can hand each and everything. We ask, oh Lord, that you would allow us to look inside our souls and to find your spirit, so that we may be guided in your will and your way, so that we may be protected, oh Lord, from those things that may come that try to block our paths from getting closer to you. We know that you are the most important, and you are the most high and the most omniscient and omniscient God. We know that all things flow through you, and we would like to only be a vessel, oh Lord, so we ask that you bless this council, that you bless this city, that you bring your spirit on it and you let it rain down and pour on every citizen, oh Lord, and every person that comes within our jurisdiction. We thank you again, oh Lord, and we thank you for continuing to bless us, and we will continue to hold you up high, because you are the magnificent, you are the one and only God, and we need nothing else. This we ask in Jesus' name, amen. Well, thank you. All right, next one on our agenda, number four is, um, yeah, is, um, a presentation from Emily Dugan from the Get the Lead Out Initiative. Is she present?
Hi.
Hi, could you step over here, please? I think there's a microphone that you may have to phone.
Melissa? Perfect. Hi, everyone, thank you so much for inviting us here tonight. Thank you especially to Ms. Crystal Richardson, we've been working with on this project and getting our efforts to identify lead service lines in Harvey started. My name is Emily Dugan. I am a contractor at General Dynamics Information Technology, and I'm here with my colleague today, Missy Pope, who is a senior advisor on this project. Go ahead, go to the next slide. So the Get the Lead Out Initiative, this is an environmental protection agency program that helps cities around the country identify where lead is and accelerate its removal. This is an entirely free program that Harvey opted into in collaboration with General Dynamics to find where lead is, apply for funding to replace it, and again, create a plan on how we're going to actually remove it. So, next slide. The commitment of the Glow Initiative is to implement proactive measures to ensure clean, safe drinking water in Harvey. Lead can cause significant health issues, specifically to younger and older folks, and so the best way to prevent that is to remove it at its source. We support the identification and the planning of the replacement of this through four central things seen up here. First, there's the historical records review. Harvey's gone through much of this already to develop the initial inventory. Then we'll be doing visual inspection. That's mostly what I'm going to be talking today is how we're going to do this visual inspection. There's community engagement planning. That's going to involve everyone in this room to help identify where that is, talk about how we're going to keep your water safe, and then finally, funding and replacement planning. We're currently in the process of doing our replacement plan for Harvey. It's a long process, and I know that Harvey too has already worked with an engineer on applying for funding to remove lead service lines. Next slide. Visual inspection, that's where we're at right now. We really need to know where the lead is, because you can't replace something if you don't know where it is, of course. We're doing that through a few different ways. The first, we want to make sure that we're not just disrupting your water, digging a big hole. So the first thing that we're trying to do is have visual inspections through an online survey that you can take, and you have a sign here. You might have seen some of these signs around. Thank you Water Department for putting those up. I was so excited to see that. There's a little QR code here, and you can scan that to take the survey online. It takes three minutes. There's instructions. If you find your water meter, take a photo, submit that. It really, really helps the city. You can also find this survey on the Water Department website, too, if you're not, some of you likes to scan QR codes. I know there are those of us who are like that. The other thing that we are planning to is to actually have a team out in the field to be going and knocking on homes that we know we are not sure what the material is. So in July, you might see some of us out there. We'll have these yellow vests, a clipboard, and we'll be asking if we can come into your home and look at your basement at what that service line material is. If you don't want someone in your home, maybe you don't want to clean up your basement, you have some Christmas decorations all around, you don't want to move the boxes, go ahead and fill out that survey and we won't be bothering you. So we're definitely encouraging people to take the survey, but you might see us in July. The next thing that we would move on to is exploratory digging. That's what we call, it's our general term for anything called pot-holing. That's where we'll dig a hole in the ground so that we can see the line and identify what that material type is. Harvey has done a great job with their inventory already, and we're looking at some ways that we can actually, you know, use that pot-holing process to be used for some scientific research as well, too, so we're really excited about that. But before that happens, you're going to be getting notices. You'll know if your home is going to be one of those that might have a pothole in front of it, so it's not the kind of pothole that you drive over and it hurts your car, I promise. And we will be doing restoration afterwards as well, too, so you won't have a hole in your garden. All of this, we, with all of this data, we put this into the inventory, we make a plan for how we're going to replace all of these lead lines, and then we go out and apply for the funding for that. And then next slide. Okay, and this is again, too, this is the self-identification survey. Again, we'll leave this here for you, too, so if you want to come scan that, you can also go again to the City of Harvey's website to find that survey. Next slide. We're developing a lot of different flyers for people to use, so you'll be seeing some of these out. We're planning to send out a school flyer as well, too, so make it an educational activity for students to get them involved in identifying where the lead is. So you might be seeing these at your church, your school, in your mailbox. Just wanted to prime you for that. Next slide. Again, as I said, community engagement is a huge part of this, so we are going to be engaging you through every step of the process. We're not just going to, we're not trying to just show up at your home without any type of warning, asking to get into your basement. We want you to know that we're coming, so we'll have some signs out, some social media material that will be telling you when we're coming. So that's kind of our logo design, just trying to get you all prepared for that, and then we'll go to the next slide. We're also going to be showing up at some events in Harvey, too, so we'll have this table. This is for a community in Ohio. Harvey has their own tablecloth, too, that we're designing right now. We have fun little games, activities, resources about lead, how you can reduce your risk for lead, how to self-identify, so you'll be seeing us out this summer. Next slide. This is my favorite part of our community engagement. We really like to distract the kids, get them over there. We have buttons, lots of coloring books and things, so just so you know, we will be trying to encourage your children to come over and talk to us, so we can talk to the parents, so just be aware of that. And next slide. And again, more examples of our community engagement thing, so if you see us out this summer at a community event, come say hi and chat with us. Next slide. So what happens if we do find lead? In the Chicagoland area, there is obviously a lot of lead. We're expecting that we will find more as we go through this process, but what we're going to do is we're going to be working hard with you to make sure, one, that you're safe. We're going to be giving information on filters, on counter run your tap water to avoid the risk of ingesting more lead. We're going to support the community in identifying and applying for more grants, so that it can speed up the timeline for how this lead is being removed from the water system, and we'll help work with the community to create plans just to keep you and your family safe. Next slide. And finally, this is my pitch for everyone. Harvey's participation in Glow requires action. I want to speak as well to the older men and women, too. We encourage you to speak with your wards, your constituents, about the survey and about door knocking, letting them know, you know, take this survey so that we can find this, so that we can speed up the timeline for replacing the lead pipe service lines in Harvey, and letting them be aware that we're going to be out in the community, too, doing some door knocking in July. So connected with this, everyone here, too, if you have a family member who hasn't taken the survey yet, go home and let them know to take that, so we can get their information in there, and be sure to visit the water, the city's water page, so that we can get more information. Yeah, every record we review, every visual inspection that we do in the community gives us one step closer, so just thank you all for your participation, and again, thank you for allowing Missy and I to come and speak with you tonight. And then the last slide, I think, is just the survey again, so really, really pushing the survey. Thank you. If there are any questions, I'm happy to take them. Yes?
This one.
Thank you, thank you for your presentation. I'd like to, I'd like to know a timeline, and will you be working in conjunction with the Harvey Water Department as you're visiting residents' homes, especially seniors?
Yes, yes. We're actually, Crystal and I have been talking with other community organizations as well, and with organizations that are working with Harvey seniors, so that we're, again, we're not surprising them, there's another, there's a person that they know coming to the door with us, so that they know, okay, this is trusted, this is okay by the city. We're working very closely with the Water Department.
Now, how will we determine whether or not that these, at these houses, some of the more older houses actually have lead? I mean, do you have to go in the house to make that determination?
So the city did a great job with the inventory, the initial inventory. They did a records review of this, and they're presuming that based on the house state that there would be lead. We're going to be doing some of those, we're going to be sampling some of those, not all of them. We're still working on the exact plan for that, but we do still have quite a few that we're not sure what the material is, so we need to go and actually go into those homes to inspect that.
And in your humble opinion, about what kind of timeline are we looking at in terms of this process from beginning to end?
Their participation in Glow, that's only for the year, but for the replacement of all of the lead service lines, currently as it stands, we're looking at, that's 2037 is when that needs to be completed. I don't want you to quote me on that, there's still some, you know, changes in the lead copper roll going on that need to be approved, but that's about the timeline we're looking at.
This one.
Thank you. My question is, if I notice some of the posters are written in Spanish, do you have all your literature included, your flyers in Spanish, and your program in Spanish?
Definitely have that. If you would like us to translate this presentation, that is something that we could do as well, so that could be given to you in Spanish. I think prepared with that tonight, that's a great idea.
Okay, great, thank you, I would appreciate it.
Do you have any questions? Hearing none, thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
All right, next up. Add for business approval of ordinances and resolutions for the City of Harvey. Five oh business, nine five B new business, B one, a motion to approve the release and settlement agreement between Eddie Winters and the City of Harvey. This motion authorizes a degree upon settlement for Eddie Winters, the City of Harvey, for case number twenty dash C D dash two two four eight. Motion by the sixth and the second by the third. Is there any debate? Hearing none, give me catch your votes. Motion and carries. There is no resolution for number for that. Number two, that is a resolution authorizing the award and execution of an independent contractor agreement for construction services between the City of Harvey and County Metro City Plumbing. This resolution authorizes the removal of existing water meters located either in the Bow Fox or now fault in city right of way or residents' homes, and replacement with smart water meters in accordance with bill number two zero two five dash zero three dash zero one for a total contract amount of three hundred twenty-two thousand, eight hundred sixty-five dollars and zero cents. I have a motion by the third and the second by the first.
What do you want to add?
Is there any debate, is the thing?
That's the question.
Well, that's not a point of doubt.
Okay.
So the question is, is there a debate in that? Hearing none, give me catch your votes. Motion carries.
And that's resolution four zero zero seven, four zero zero seven.
Thank you. Next on the agenda. All the automatic reports. Chair recognizes second ward.
Good evening, Mayor Clark. Fellow alderperson's administration and residents of the great city of Harvey, first I want to wish a happy early Father's Day to all the fathers, grandfathers, mentors, and father figures in our community. Your strength, protection, and guidance do not go unnoticed. Proverbs 27 says, "The righteous man walks in his integrity; his children are blessed after him." Our city needs men who lead with integrity, love, and courage, especially in these trying times. As we celebrate our families, we must also acknowledge the financial challenges many residents are facing, particularly those raising children home for the summer. Since January of 2025, the city has approved several fee changes that affect everyday living. The municipal gas use tax was restructured, potentially increasing costs for heating and cooking gas. Credit card processing fees were added for paying water bills, permits, and city services over online or by car. Ordinance thirty-five oh one was adopted, which allows automatic annual increases to city fees and fines based on inflation according to the consumer pricing debt. A sixty-dollar transfer stamp fee was added for all property sales effective April 7th with a three percent convenience fee for digital transactions. These are just to name a few. Each of these adjustments was presented as a way that improves city revenue and services, but the cumulative impact is significant, especially for working families and seniors on fixed incomes. That's why I strongly encourage residents to attend committee meetings led by your alderpersons. These meetings give you a chance to understand proposals early, raise concerns, and help shape decisions before they're finalized. We need transparency and equity in every step we take. Adding urgency to our situation, state comptroller Susanna Mendozza continues to classify Harvey as being in critical financial condition, citing serious debt and part of cash flow issues. This isn't just a financial concern, it's a call to act responsibly and collaboratively. And while we discuss finances, we must not lose sight of the lies behind the numbers. A letter here will show shocking in Harvey, and the one whose foot was mauled by a dog. These tragedies underscore the urgent need for stronger public safety, accountability, and compassionate city response. To everyone in the second ward and across the south of here, thank you, gracias, chico. Your support, advocacy, and presence make a difference. Let's continue to rise together, and we'll be having a second ward meeting this Wednesday, six PM to eight PM, 15446 five Lexington, at Transformation Community United Methodist Church. Thank you.
Next, we have third ward.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you, my friend, I really is. I love to see you in the room, it's beautiful. When we're doing our meetings here to conduct business, we all get a packet. We used to give it, like on a Friday, we get it a whole week ahead. That's the time we are supposed to read our packet, call to get answers to our questions we may have out. And we come to meetings, we're to say, yeah, your name, so what we agree on, if you don't agree with anything, just say no. These are meetings are not for the grandstanding and all of the things that happens in these meetings, or for us to even be butchered up in here. We're doing our best with what we have. We always talk about financial responsibility, and I know everybody is tired of us talking about what the last administration did, how, after a hundred sixty-five million dollars is a lot to chew on, in one term, two terms. But I got always saying, with all the monies that the businesses owe us, I wish all of you would take this time out that you come in here for this, to go to those stores and shame them into giving us our money. See, that would be the first step to a movement to improve our community. Give us our money. We have a funeral home here, which we all know, funeral homes, everybody gonna pay to bury their loved one. Anytime you don't have a funeral home paying you what they supposed to pay you, we can sit in here and grandstand about something that's not even as important as giving our money to help us live what we do. So I implore you all again, let's stick together to show us the money. Thank you, Papa.
Excuse me, um, what are they supposed to pay?
They're taxed, they're property taxed. The taxes they haven't paid us in over ten years, over ten years, so everybody asks like, yeah, I try to contain, because they probably can't, you know, I understand sometimes I do, it only takes so much, a little bit at a time, because I don't think they understand who has taken our money, who has our money, who won't give us our money. They brought us to this big streets, we've been running this city with no money. We've been running the city with no money. Everything we've gotten has been done here as the grant money, and everybody is saying, why do we fix this street and not this street? You can't take, you can't take this money to be and put over there, we all know that. And then, like I said, not only you people here, some of you people that's sorority, you know, because I was about to say, that you're supposed to be trying to work together and improve your community. It's summertime, we got a lot going on, it's summertime, it's summertime. We can at least come together and try to help our kids, at least keep our kids, keep our kids safe.
Thank you. All right, everybody. Can we please come over, so we can... And finally, we have the first ward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone, and once again, happy Father's Day to all the fathers out there and all the role models. You know, I just want to say, I am the longest-serving elected official on this board, and with that being said, I have to recap my first eight years. Many of you know that I myself was threatened, harassed, even to the point that my employer was sent flyers along with my colleagues about unfavorable characteristics of me. I was contacted by the federal government, Cook County, and many of those media forces seeking a story, and I had a story to share, and I didn't share it. Not only did I, but all the aldermen, I believe, were contacted by these three outlets during my first eight years as an elected official under a previous administration. Now, my last six years under this administration, under Mayor Clark, never once did the federal government or Cook County ever contact about any story. And I will say, for the record, only one media outlet reached out to me in those six years seeking a story, but I didn't have a story to share. And trust me, if there was a story, I would be the first one to share it. I took an oath to uphold the laws and duties of an alderperson, to support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Illinois, and faithfully discharged these duties to the best of my ability, and I take that seriously. It's not subjective, it's not whether I choose to follow a law or a duty of an alderperson. I took an oath that I would, in the State of Illinois and the U.S. Constitution. Therefore, I ask each and every one of you, before you hear a story, because you will hear them, check the facts, FOIA, Freedom of Information Act, you go to the clerk's office, and nothing else. I have nothing to hide or nothing to mislead anyone. Please give me a call, and my phone number is seven oh eight, five nine six, seventy-four seventy. Thank you.
Put down the microphone, we'll be sort of in the next...
Oh, I'm sorry. My phone number is seven oh eight, five nine six, seventy-four seventy. Thank you.
Next, we have public comment. Public comment is encouraged, I appreciate it. This is the only opportunity for the public to address the city council on agenda items and any other city-related business. In order to accomplish all business on the agenda and be respectful of everyone's time, council members will not engage in dialogue with individual members of the audience, and no immediate action will be taken on any public comment issue. Please limit your comments to three minutes. No speaker may donate his overtime. Comments shall be courteous and respectful at all times. No person may use public comment for the purpose of campaign or advertisement. This is not a question and answer time, and council cannot engage in conversation with the public. Questions and concerns about operations should be addressed at city staff during regular business hours. So first, we have up for public comment is Chappelle Hooks, followed by, looks like Kathy Cool Waters.
Hello, Harvey, my name is Chappelle Hooks. I am a newly elected, um, Harvey public body trustee in 2023. Thank you for all those who voted me. I'm not part of the, if you find not, but the jazz that's been taking today. Alderman Smith, many businesses that pay me, because that has nothing to do with you. Being in a sorority has nothing to do with what's going on in Harvey. You talk about those taxes, that's not to be your business, that's the countless businesses. We have no businesses, and about your last administration prior, you four decided for us not to have a grocery store, you all decided for us not to have streets done, you all decided for us not to have lights, all of that, y'all hear that? You four, yes, y'all hear, y'all four hear that? Y'all missed eighteen minutes. You say, he said that y'all was protesting, where? Because y'all wasn't outside, y'all went up to him. Even if y'all was outside, y'all wasn't here though. So you wasn't holding up your fiduciary duties to the people. The man came and was going to give us a grocery store, he was going to pay the... He was gonna pay the back taxes and everything. Y'all said no. We were gonna get a Ricky Rocket. Y'all said no. Everything, y'all said no to. Now look, like I said before, the hole or the ditch that you dug, Kello, you should have dug it for yourself, because y'all man right in and out, because we ain't got jack here, nothing. Y'all build a 51, you don't need building for what? Can't feed the people. You can't even give the people medication. They don't have no pharmacy, no nothing here. So, so what y'all, what did y'all accomplish? Last administration, nothing. And then you talk about the, the 1 million, what, 1, 169? And, um, what, what, what they got to doing now? Six years now, six years, no traffic report. But y'all steady paying out all these lawsuits. You getting all this other stuff. You got these big screens and all that. Everybody driving car and all this and that. But, but you talking about the debt from last administration? Make it make sense. Show, show that money. That's all we want to see.
Thank you, next.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good evening, actually. Uh, I'm with the Flexing the Park, which is a LGBTQ education support and advocacy group. On April 28th, a Harvey resident was accused of being made pedophile and is a gay man. If those accusations were true in his job, the school where he was, as a mandated reporter, would have had to report him. He would have been charged and prosecuted if those charges were true. And it's irresponsible to perpetuate that kind of stereotype that has existed for eons about gay men. In February of 2025, Gallup polled released, uh, some stats. 9.3 of the U.S. pop, percent of the U.S. population identifies as LGBTQ. 9.3% of Harvey is a big top of Harvey. 23% of Generation Z are up and comers, identified as LGBTQ. When they see their leadership denigrating LGBTQ people, they're not gonna want to stay here. They're not gonna want to stay here after graduation. They're not gonna want to buy houses. They're not gonna want to open businesses. Without our young people, remember Whitney Houston says, children are our future. Our cities and Southland are gonna fold. They're gonna fail. We need to make all people feel welcome in all of the South suburbs, because we know in the South suburbs, there's not a lot of support for LGBTQ people. And I see a very diverse group in this room, and a very diverse group leading Harvey. Y'all know what stereotypes do. Y'all know the effects that stereotypes have, and nobody should be perpetuating them in this stadium. We need to come together, and we need to be the examples for our young people. So I hope that this august group will not fall for stereotypes, will not perpetuate stereotypes, and will not perpetuate rumors. And I thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you. Next is Mazurk Irvin, followed by Cindy Wilson.
Uh, hello, everybody. My name is Mazurk Irvin, former trustee of the Harvey Public Library. And, um, wow, I'm disappointed. I just, the waste, the waste. I am sick and tired of you all arresting Kobe Chapman over your violation of Robert's Rule of Order. I've never seen so many violations in all the days of my life. You just changing to your, our clerk's rules of order. This is crazy. We don't know what's going on. We don't know what you're doing. All the lawsuits, all these people we paying out. Eddie Winters, police chief. He started community policing. Came in here, tried to rally around the community. You got rid of, now we paying him out. Who is advising you all to, to, to do these things? It's not about winning. It's about what's right and what's wrong. And once you put that into your vocabulary about, about what's right and what's wrong, then we're gonna really change things in the city of Harvey. I'm not up here to win. I'm up here to get what's right for my city. And I think that's what everybody else is here for too. We ain't at no dog race, okay? We ain't at no horse race. So you need to change the way that you look at things. Person, all this personal stuff that's going on, you need to get rid of that. Because if she asks a question, there's a good reason why she's asking it. And I don't wanna hear nothing about, you got this many days to take care of this before that, that. Apparently, you all ain't answered her. If she's emailing you or calling you, you on the law firm, and where they at tonight? Where are they at tonight? You on your own, you by yourself this time. I want to see this shot. Grandstanding, Ms. Smith, you the worst one of all. You are the worst of them all. What, what is going on up in here? Shirley, you said somebody was contacting you and were questioning yourself? You, you're just as bad, okay? You voted to have her removed. This woman had surgery, and these policemen up in here tossing around here like she a rag doll. You don't know what pain she's feeling in her body. She ain't assaulting nobody. Y'all assaulted her. You four and him. It's got to get better than what it is. It's got to. The treasurer's report, we can't get a report? What, what's going on? And this tell us how much money that we have. It don't have to be down to the nickel penny. You can do better than what you doing. This is not the way that you run a city. Okay, I expect more. Because you the oldest and been here the longest. You know better than everybody else. But to please him to get that little $25,000 for the year to pay for your expenses, to shake your head. You know I know what I'm talking about. I'm not you in town. And one time, me and you were linked up together, but not no more, not no more. The truth will set you free, okay? And that's all that I want.
Hey, I'm Seth Gillo San. My issue is not with Christopher Clark today. My issue is not with the chief's office today. We supposed to be speaking on the 18th. My issue is with my alderman. That's what my issue is. I called you on the phone and told you what was going on before I even talked to the chief, before I even talked to the mayor's office. I told you what was going on. You asked me, so, um, what you want me to do? You don't, you don't come to my meeting, so what you want me to do? So I have to do something for you for you to do something for me? Then I asked you about the shooting that happened behind my house. You said I ain't the police. What you want me to do? And then you said you want to talk about Ms. Kobe, Ms. Kobe. Don't tell me about this lady. I don't know what this lady got going on. I never met this lady for two times in my life. And the second time I met this lady, she was picking up trash. Ten times, you done picked up trash around your city. You think they step down for real? It's, it's, it's not given. It's not. You think you bigger than the program, baby? When you just a puppet on a string.
Words in my mouth and meditation in my heart makes something I say over my strength and my redeeming. Lord, bring peace, love, and take away the hate and all this frivolous things that happen in here. Lord, guide us to a better way. Lord, and take all this get-back arrest and all this stuff out of the city of Harvey. Lord, you said we cannot pray if we're evil. Our prayers are not answered when we do things after we pray. In the name of Jesus, I pray. Role and responsibility of a municipal treasurer. A treasurer in Illinois holds a significant position within the local government managing the financial affairs of the municipalities. The responsibility are defined by the Illinois Municipal Code, which includes overseeing the collection, safeguarding, and disbursement of municipal funds. Treasurers ensure compliance with state laws such as the Local Government Debt Reform Act and maintain accurate financial records, records of transparency and accountability. Treasurers also report responsible for investment management under the Public Fund Investment Act, prioritizing safety, liquidity, and yield. They navigate property tax, working with the county officials to ensure timely and accurate tax billing. Their role requires a deep understanding of the property tax code and an implication for local revenue. In budget preparation and fiscal forecasting, treasurers collaborate with municipal offices to develop physical sound budgets. I said, and read this again, in budget preparation and fiscal forecasting, treasurers collaborate with municipal officials to develop physical sound budgets. It involves analyzing revenue streams and identifying financial challenges, while staying informed about the changes in state and federal funds and legislative development. I tell you, this city is backward. What's the problem is here? The treasurer can't make a progress or do anything, because if the treasurer was able to do something, they would know what the reports are. They know the money coming in, the money going out. Right now, we have, as, as, uh, the brother of Mazurk said, $25,000 allocated for each ward. And what does that mean? $25 for each ward? The question I want to ask you, as I said the last time, tell me what each alderperson is getting for this? Is each alderperson fairly getting the money? And I say this again. The treasurer, my suggestion, should be holding an American Express. Well, that alderperson gets the money, it's seen, it's a report made, and it's a document sent to the city hall and everybody else. But the bottom line is, we have a treasurer that's being mistreated. And we're being mistreated because our financial understanding what's happening in Harvey and the monies being spent and for whatever it is, we don't know what it is. And we still don't know what it is. Here's a police chief, and I loved him. I love Mr. Warner. He set all kinds of programs up for us. See, this is the policing and all that. We had block captains and all that, that guy. The bottom line that I see? Show me the money, and I won't say anything bad about you. But I'm not shaming anybody lacking alderpersons that's gonna give a report. They're giving a shame. Let's be right.
Good evening. My name is Bernard Turner. Mayor Clark and your staff and department heads. I'd like to speak on, um, well, you know, knowing you're having the week, the weekend for the July 4th. It's on the 55th. The city of Harvey does a good job cleaning up, but I think you need to put the signs out sooner, because people might be on vacation that time. They might not be able to move their car unless they talk to their neighbors or something. And it'd be easier to have them know in advance. Also, uh, we should have, uh, when the staff report every once in a month, maybe break them up in half, not all of them to be on the same first. And then they should have something to say. Last time, they were like, no report. It's gotta be something going on in every department. But something, maybe it's two sentences. At least let us know that they doing something that's for the city. And the minutes, they always say, no old business, but nothing reported what was there. Because I'm not coming every, I don't come every meeting, but the people that come, really seniors of Harvey, the most of us come, and they should be able to see what was discussed. Not, they got to write word for word, but some highlights of what was discussed, where they like to repeat something that they weren't aware of. So it'd be better if they, and we need to be able to, um, diversity, communities going to be diverse, the Mexicans and Africans. We have to bring them into the chambers, because they trying to get political school districts and stuff like that. So we need to be, make some type of message to get out to them where they can be participating in the city of Harvey moving forward. And also, I'd like to speak on public works. They do a great job. I mean, I think the staff is more, much more than what you had before. Because I see 20 and 30 guys out there cleaning these lots, empty stuff, and they really do a hard job. And I don't know what, how they, uh, they got a lot of tasks, because I see a lot of highways and everything all over Harvey. And I've been here since 69, as eight years old. And I seen the good times and the bad times. But also, um, the, uh, when you staff get reports, they need to get something. And, um, one more thing, and, oh, when we, uh, need to get, maybe you have, I'll have a suggestion where we can get young kids, like you could have a program where we have a scholarship for high school, public high schools, and all the eighth grades going to high school. And you could definitely, you could do that fund by at a meet and say $5 and give a raffle for $15 to the who have come and spent $5 and have a chance to get a raffle ticket. And that'd be, if that money can go to the scholarship fund. And with my, my last time, well, 15 seconds. Uh, give it to the next person.
Good afternoon. I guess I'm gonna start by saying my name is Amir A. Shakur-Clear. I'm the president of Free the First International. And we would like to make a statement. And I'm gonna start by asking a question. What does Christopher Clark have to fear with accountability to the community? That is the question of the hour. Mr. Clark, is it sweetheart deals that are provided for your lifestyle? Good question. Have you doubted in the financials of the city's accounting? What do you have to fear, Mr. Clark? When leadership stands outside of public interest, it is not leadership. We call it being a tyrant. Drangical movements have things to hide. So I ask you the question again. What do you have to fear, Mr. Clark? The last time I came here, I addressed you, and I asked you very specific questions, and you still haven't changed your course of action. You should be ashamed of yourself as a black man who politically indicted a black female. That is not leadership. That is not being a man. So I will no longer address you. What I will do is talk to the police officers in this room and say that the day that you become a political arm of the mayor's office, is the day that you go wrong. You have fallen off your low, 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 of office. We ask that you change your course, because you can also stand at home and be held accountable for your actions. We want the public to send a very loud and clear message at this point that the Harvey police are a political arm of the mayor's office. Let the public know in that if, once you stand in front of a police officer in Harvey, expect the worst every time. What I'm interested in at this point is any officer who has acted outside of public interest, please send us an email, I'm gonna say that again, freethefirstinternational.com or gmail.com, or you can look us up. We're interested in indicting these officers. We're interested in working with accountability boards and the state of Illinois to have these folks indicted. And if you don't believe me, then check my record, because I stood up against governors. I stood up against former police officers. Take it to heart. The last thing that I want to say, Mr. Clark, is I hope you never forget the day when you bastardized your office.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Um, so, uh, first of all, I don't, I'm wondering, I'm wondering why the mayor was such a coward as to schedule a media interview at the same time as a press conference that he scheduled at 6:00 PM? I wonder if it has something to do with the fact that I was discussing about his disgusting, perverted, incorrect, illegal allegations that were being on April 28th. Actually, that was the same night my alderman was arrested. He said that I had inappropriate sexual something or other He said that I had inappropriate sexual something or other with, with my students when I taught at Thoron, which is, like I said, disgusting. It's not right. He said that to, because he wanted to teach us a lesson, quote unquote, about allegations because we have no proof of things that he has done. Well, actually, we do. We still don't have any receipts. You, you can see all the people who got arrested for no reason. We can clearly see you're extorting businesses in churches. You give people fines all the time for retaliation. How can you be a city mayor and make terrible allegations, you know? You know, what's really sad is what actually happened at Thoron is that I was being bullied mercilessly for being a gay teacher. And administration didn't respond. So, another thing I said is, hmm, well, that's confidential. Now, I shared some of that information, but there's plenty I didn't share with Mr. Clark. How did Mr. Clark gain access to that confidential information about a District two oh five employee and about minors in District two oh five? Does it maybe have something to do with someone that he knows very well in District two oh five that I will not name? You can do your research. Then Tyrone and Delaney. First of all, why are you laughing? You have been accused of sexually violently going after women so many times, and it is not rumors, sir. Don't you dare laugh at me again. And you can't even look at me because you know it's true. And Delaney Smith, you work for the Illinois Department of Children and Family Services, and you throw out allegations, false allegations, and lies, actually went after a child. Delaney Smith, forget me in the face. You don't even have the guts, do you? Well, somebody got to report her because, you know, I think, don't you think her boss should know that? I think that's pretty serious, especially since she's a mandated reporter. Finally, shame on all of you. It's Pride Month. I'll stand up for the LGBT black youth. I just went to a fashion show at Thoron High School, and they were there, and they did a great job. Did you know that great suicide and homelessness are sky high amongst the black community? In the LGBT community? We are here. We live with you, we're your neighbors, we're your family. You cannot ignore us. These youth look to you, and you have failed. Shame on you.
Next, we have departmental reports. We've got Scott off, the city administrator, follow our reports on down.
Good evening. My name is Sean Juan Ellis, and I'm the deputy city administrator. In the absence of the city administrator, I review a report which speaks to full transparency about the state of our city and the work that's being conducted. To be completely honest with you, our city has never truly been removed from crisis mode. Since 2019, every step forward has been a part of an effort to not just remove, but to rebuild a government that was fundamentally broken. Let me remind you that at the very start of this administration, the city hall was raided by the FBI. Documents, computers, and other material were seized. These were the items Clark's administration could not account for. Beyond that, there was no real filing system in place. Nothing was organized, nor was there any structure. Therefore, the past six years, day-to-day operations have been focused on putting out fires as they come, literally and figuratively. That's not how a city should run. But that's the reality that was inherited. I realize how difficult it may be to believe that a city could function without basic policies, procedures, and oversight. Unfortunately, that was our reality. Now, fast forward, we are committed to zero, zeroing in on each department to identify areas that need improvement. As we uncover issues, we implement solutions that are sustainable and that are sustainable and effective by streamlining operations that services are easy to access, consistent, and efficient, both to our residents and our staff. Today, I'm pleased to announce that we are finalizing the audit in 2022. Once it's complete, the full report will remain available on our city's website for public review. Immediately after, we will begin with audit 2023. However, let me be clear. Do not expect that 2022 audit will be perfect as it will reflect decisions and operations from 2021 at a time when many of our systems and processes we have now were not put in place. The benchmark is set for 2024 audit, which will be the first audit that gives us a real and accurate picture of how our current policies and procedures work. Additionally, in the first quarter of this year, we applied for as many grants as we could. The work continues. Our priority is to bring and external resources to support much needed improvements to our infrastructure. Here are a few key updates. Streetlights, the assessment of streetlights along the one hundred and forty-seventh street is currently underway. We anticipate going out to bid within the next couple of months. Fire hydrant replacement. We received only one bid for this project, which requires us to go back to bid. Water meter replacement. We accepted a grant contract, and we're now able to move forward with this project. This is a major step in modernizing our utility services. Other major projects such as renovations along Broadway Avenue at one hundred and fiftieth street and one hundred and fifty-fifth street are currently in the design phase. These projects will take time, and we don't expect to see shovels in the ground until 2026. But rest assured, the work is moving forward, and regular updates will be provided as we progress. Our mission is to rebuild this city with integrity, transparency, and a clear vision for the future. It is a long road, but we are making steady, meaningful progress. Thank you for your continued support and trust. This concludes my report.
Mayor, council members, and residents of City of Harvey. I'm here today to provide you with the comprehensive update on recent crime statistics and the cases handled by the Harvey Police Department during the month of two thousand, May of two thousand twenty-five. This report will also encompass the department's overall activities for the month. In May two thousand twenty-five, the Harvey Police Department, excuse me, responded to a total of two thousand nine hundred and fifty-five calls for service. Their efforts resulted in fifty misdemeanor arrests, twelve felony arrests, one hundred and twenty-three moving and equipment violations, eighty vehicles that were towed, seventy-three reported accidents. I'm pleased to report that through the diligent, exceptional efforts by Investigation Division, felony charges were approved for two significant criminal investigations during May. Case number one, a domestic-related incident in one six nine four zero South Austin that some may know as the Motel Six. On May second, two thousand twenty-five, at approximately twelve twenty-four A M, the Harvey Police Department investigators and officers responded to a domestic-related complaint at the Motel Six located at that address. Upon arrival, an employee alerted officers to a male physically assaulting a naked female. Officers proceeded to the room where they overheard a female pleading for the male suspect to cease the assault and release her. After the occupants refused to open the door, the officers forced entry. Inside, they observed a naked female curl in a fetal position on the floor while the naked male suspect stood over her. The male suspect was immediately taken into custody. The female victim was transported to Engels Hospital for treatment of her injuries. During the subsequent investigation, it was determined that the male suspect had forcibly dragged the female victim back to the motel room from the hallway after she had initially attempted to escape. The male, the victim sustained a swollen eye and she, visible blood in her mouth and multiple lacerations to her face. Detective Mohammed formally charged Mark Swanigan, a male born December twenty-ninth, nineteen ninety-four, from Chicago with the following offenses: attempted murder, kidnapping, aggravated domestic battery, and unlawful restraint. All charges were reviewed and approved by the Cook County State's Attorney's Office. Case number two, aggravated domestic battery at one six six two nine Indian Avenue. On May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five, at approximately four twenty-six A M, Detective McGowan was called to investigate an aggravated domestic battery incident at that location. Upon arrival, officers located Sylvan Martinez inside the residence with several stab wounds to his upper body. His girlfriend and initial suspect was located outside the residence. Mr. Martinez informed officers that he was stabbed following a dispute, and she was taken into custody. Following an extensive investigation, it was determined that the victim acted, I'm sorry, the offender acted in self-defense during the incident. It stated that Mr. Martinez began strangling her after she refused to engage in sexual intercourse with him. Detectives also discovered that the victim had previously filed a domestic battery report against Mr. Martinez in two thousand twenty-four. The Assistant State's Attorney's Office reviewed the case and approved one count of aggravated domestic battery. The Harvey Police Department remains steadfast in its dedication to enhancing the public safety and the quality of life for our residents. We deeply value your continued support as we work to move this city forward. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, everybody. The Harvey Department reports that May, our department's responded to one hundred and fifty-three calls, sixteen calls fire-related, forty-two calls EMS, twenty-two calls for attention, eighteen calls for active conditions, twenty-five calls for false alarm, and nine calls for service calls. We urge our residents to go on Smart nine-one, create a medical profile. So when you have a medical emergency, meaning dial nine-one, that information will be available for our dispatchers. So thank you, that's my report.
Good evening. Mayor, council members, and residents here. My name is Caesar Suarez. I'm the economic development director for the city here. And my main responsibilities is business development, planning and zoning, and also property sales. We have a lot of property here, and we also do a lot of that work here for planning and zoning. On the business development side, the city staff and council members went to the ICSC conference on May eighteenth and twentieth, and we had a multitude of potential prospects are interested in the city. We're following up on Starbucks, Sonic, Steak and Shake, Choice Hotels, Cordoba, Planet Fitness, and the rest. And mainly, the key areas would be in the northeast and the southwest corners near the interstate. That's where the main interest lies with attracting industry and retail. We also currently have about eight Class Eight property tax applications. So we're going to review them, and it'll be coming before our council in the coming months. With regard to planning and zoning, at the end of two thousand twenty-five, we received fifty-eight zoning applications, clearances, year-to-date. For most of you know, before you can really locate in the city, you have to have zoning clearances, and so it takes time to really get through that process. And we have far more than we've ever had before. So that's, out of the fifty-eight that we have, thirty-three have been processed, with thirty-two approved, one denied. And then we have twenty-five remaining right now, and many more are coming along the way. We have received a special use permit for an area, and we're expecting to have that meeting as well with the Planning and Zoning Commission. With regard to property sales, we're retracting properties, and we also include both city properties and also other private properties that may be eligible for a judicial deed or a tax deed. So there's very opportunities out there to really convert and redevelop vacant lots, vacant properties by identifying the property and submitting a letter of intent. You can do so online right now. Thus far, we have interest and activity on one hundred and eighty-two properties. They include one hundred and four have requested for potential sale. Thirty-one have been approved for redevelopment. Twenty-eight are being purchased by M W R D for the transfer to the city. Nine properties have been sold. Seven are going to be returned to the city. We have denials of two, and one property we are leasing. So most recently, on April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five, the city council approved the sale of sixty East one hundred and fifty-fifth street to two Blue Crest Estates, a single-family home. And there's going to be an investment of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars to renovate that vacant home. So we're excited about that. So we continue to prepare the commercial industrial properties for sale. We own ten commercial properties, eight industrial properties, and we continually present them to interested parties. That is my report.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Official citizens, my name is Louis Suarez. I'm the director of the city of Harvey. My department continues to work efficiently, diligently, most importantly, quietly, to manage the city's finances in terms of making sure we're recording revenue properly and expenditures. We also work very hard to work within the limited means of the city. We talk about the real estate taxes collection. I think about fifty-five, some of us actually bill, which does cost a tremendous cash crunch on the city's behalf. Also, we're paying pensions, exorbitant pensions, to make up for pensions that really have not been properly funded, not just over the last ten years, not just the last twenty years, probably closer to the last thirty-five. Continuing to work with the limited resources we have.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, Public Works Department. Since the onset of the spring season, the Public Works Department has taken task, to task some of the major issues faced by the city. This has not been an easy feat. As Mr. Sepp discussed in the previous meetings, one of our strategic priorities is ensuring that all city employees receive the necessary training to excel in their current roles and to grow into future opportunities. Over the past several weeks, we've made meaningful progress by hosting our first chain saw safety and operation training in conjunction with I-DOT. We had an excellent turnout of about nineteen attendees, including participants from several neighborhood villages. This collaborative training strengthened individual safety practices, improved regional emergency preparedness, and promoted municipal cooperation, all which are key components of building a more skilled and resilient workforce. As part of our ongoing initiative to identify and document water service line materials, we continue to work with our residents. So far, we have surveyed and completed ninety-one in-home inspections. However, we still have a long way to go. As mentioned in council meetings prior, our pumping station team continues to provide efficient and timely service to the city's operational needs. Over the past two weeks, they have completed three hundred and thirty-two work orders, which include but not limit meter reads, exchanges, turn-ons, shut-offs, and locates. That's where our street division, they continue to operate under a war-by-war strategy focused on infrastructure upgrades and neighborhood beautification. Despite various challenges, the team has shown a strong coordination and consistent progress. They installed fencing and barricades around two vacant lots at one hundred and sixty-six and Finch. They filled over fifty potholes citywide, cleared over two hundred vacant lots, cleared and cut, sorry, over two hundred vacant lots and properties, and boarded up ten abandoned homes. On May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five, the Public Works Department, in collaboration with the Harvey Police Department and building departments, conducted a major team cleanup on one hundred and fifty-first street and Lexington. The initiative was in response to residents' concerns regarding small children entering a questionable abandoned property. To enhance safety and restore the area, the team worked together to move debris, boarded up four abandoned homes, installed security cameras to monitor the daily activity. This project demonstrated our commitment to quick, effective responses to resident concerns and improving public safety. A citywide survey of our street signs has been completed. As a result, so far, seventy new, seventy new signs have been installed, including stop signs and other traffic signs. We pre-made and scheduled installation throughout, to continue throughout the season. These efforts aim to enhance traffic visibility and promote safer roadways throughout the city. Thank you for all your continued dedication and teamwork. Let's stay focused and keep building a better herd.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council, and fellow residents. I'm pleased to provide this monthly report on behalf of the Building and Inspection Services Department. Our team has remained active and efficient, ensuring that permits, inspections, and business licenses are handled with diligence and timeliness, especially as we enter our peak season for rehabilitation and maintenance work. In the month of May, our department approved a total of nine permits, making a strong start to our busiest season because of the favorable weather conditions. These permits include, these permits include twenty roof permits, ten solar permits, along with ten rehab permits. Additionally, we approved the demolition of two residential properties due to structural concerns and safety issues. One forty-eight thirty-five Vale Avenue and one fifty-two twenty-two Loomis Avenue. These actions are part of our ongoing commitment to improve public safety. We are proud to report that two hundred and eleven business licenses were approved and made, a sign of continued economy and creating opportunities for residents. Before I close, I want to take a moment to acknowledge something just as important as permits and inspections, how we treat each other as neighbors. Our work brings us into neighborhoods across the city. We sometimes see tension arise between neighbors over property lines, maintenance issues, and misunderstandings. While our department will always do a departmental force code to mediate where necessary, many of these issues can be resolved through simple conversation and a bit of patience. Let's remember that this is our community. The success of Harvey depends not just on city services or officials, but on each of us making the effort to communicate, cooperate, and show mutual respect. Together, we can continue to build not just better homes and businesses, but a stronger, more unified city. This concludes my report.
Good evening. I'm Lexia Hall, Director of Communications for the city. Our department is continuing to focus on communication and engagement. Last month, we hosted our second Community Solutions Meeting of the Year, where representatives from Cook County Animal Control and the Animal Cruelty Society were on hand for a discussion on animal control in the city. So thank you to all who joined us. As many of you know, the city produces a monthly newsletter, which is called the Harvey Pulse. Thank you all for sharing your resounding positive feedback via a survey that we recently created. So far, we've had about fifty, we've had about, we've had about fifty critiques. And the main critique is that the information doesn't come out on time. Getting a newsletter to the residents is an issue that we are working on as it concerns us as well. Just know that your comments have been heard, and we are looking at ways to get to you sooner. In the meantime, please remember that it is available on our website about three weeks sooner than it arrives in your mailbox, and is also available in a video format on our Facebook page and on our YouTube channel. If you haven't seen it yet, you can take a look and listen right now.
The volume seventeen of Harvey Pulse, your go-to source for all the latest news and happenings in the city of Harvey. And the city of Harvey, we believe residents deserve to know how decisions are made. And the city department believes residents deserve to know how decisions are made, how tax dollars are spent, and what's being done each day to move the city forward. That's why the city is focused on creating more opportunities for public engagement and more ways for residents to stay informed. That includes clearer communication and consistent updates on projects and city goals. Recent efforts include a newly designed city website, a monthly newsletter, and more timely updates across official social media platforms. Residents are encouraged to read the information provided on these channels. In that same spirit, the mayor has made a personal commitment to accessibility through weekly meeting and mayor sessions every Friday. This open door time invites residents to bring their concerns, questions, or ideas directly to City Hall. Transparency builds trust, and trust springs new. Planning to close a property in Harvey? Don't forget to apply for a real estate transfer stamp at least five business days before the closing day. Applications can be submitted in person at City Hall or online at cityofharveyil.com. All details and required forms are available on our website. All dogs and cats in the City of Harvey must be registered. Residents can stop by the clerk's office to complete registration to ensure pets are safe and accounted for. Last month, the fire department hosted a CPR training for senior residents. The training equips participants to act quickly in the event of a cardiac emergency, where knowing CPR can increase survival rates by up to fifty percent. Those interested in visiting classes can call seven oh eight, three three one, seven seven, two zero to register. Residents are also encouraged to sign up with Smart nine one one. This free service allows you to create a safety profile with critical personal information such as medical history and emergency contacts. That information is instantly shared with dispatchers during a nine one one call, even if the caller is unable to speak. You can sign up at smartnineoneone.com. If you've interacted with the building department, we want to hear from you to better understand your experience and shape future improvements. The survey link is included in the printed edition newsletter, informs throughout City Hall, and is available on the city's website. Thanks to community participation, this year's spring cleanup resulted in more than ninety-four times as waste collected. A cleaner Harvey is a shared success. Thank you, Public Works. We also held our second Community Solutions Meeting. This one focused on animal care and control. Join us at the next one to meet with our best solution. To ensure that this newsletter remains helpful and relevant, a short survey is available. The survey takes just a few minutes and provides valuable insights to help improve future additions. Scan either the QR code or visit our website to take part. With frequent train traffic throughout the city, residents are reminded to review railroad safety tips from building one operation life saver included in this issue. Whether driving a walkie, stay alert, and stay safe near rail crossings. Public comment is a vital part of each city council meeting. It's the time when residents are invited to speak directly to their local government. If you want to participate, sign up at the welcome table before the meeting begins. Speakers begin up to three minutes. This is the community's time to raise concerns, share feedback, and offer suggestions. Public participation helps shape the future of Harvey and every voice matters. A festive single-day mile celebration was held with food, fun, and live entertainment. Thanks to the city clerk's office for organizing the event. Well, that's all for this issue of the Harvey Pulse. Join us next month for more.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Maria. I am the manager for the Water Department. Uh the following is an overview of recent water department activities, billing statistics, and revenue collections for the current reporting period. Our department completed a total of two hundred and twenty-one work orders, which included high bill complaints, new residents uh water turn-ons and shut-offs, visual meter readings, and residential gift checks. To date, we have successfully installed two two thousand three hundred forty-eight smart meters throughout the community. A total of five thousand eight hundred forty-seven water bills were issued this billing cycle with one thousand six hundred thirty-six accounts enrolled in paperless leave room. We currently have five million seven hundred eleven, sixteen hundred twenty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents in outstanding water balances. During this period, we collected a hundred and fifty-four thousand three hundred twenty-one and twenty-seven cents toward those outstanding accounts. We remain committed to improving service delivery, expanding smart meter implementation, and strengthening our effort to recover past due balances. Thank you for your continued support as we work to provide efficient and reliable water services.
Good evening, I'm the Director of Human Resources. The Human Resource Department is working on making our interview process better. A positive experience can increase the likelihood of job offers by sixty-six percent. The Human Resource Department thrives on efficiency, clarity, and communication. And the sharing of company culture to build trust, our goal is to increase that percentage to one hundred percent. We're also striving to create policies and procedures. With that understanding, by making policy changes, it will reform the foundation of local govern governance, ensuring consistent decision-making, transparent operations, and accountability. Policies and procedures help hold employees accountable for their actions and ensure that municipality is operating in a transparent and ethical manner. The Human Resource Department is also updating job descriptions and titles. It's crucial for reflecting organizational changes and ensuring clarity for the roles and responsibility. In which it provides performance, clear descriptions allow for more effective performance evaluations and feedback. Accurate descriptions attract the right candidate and save time on resources in the hiring process. We are identifying training opportunities to equip employees with necessary skills and knowledge to enhance the overall success of our organization. The Human Resource Department continues to implement strategies to reduce employee turnover, such as creating a positive work environment, offering competitive benefits, and providing opportunity for career growth. Also, the H R department does regular check-ins with managers and employees to provide ongoing feedback and develop opportunities as a part of comprehensive growth and strategy. This open communication allows employees to stay on track, address any challenges, and receive recognition for their achievements. We will continue to provide continual learning opportunities, trainings, workshops, coaching, and mentor programs to enhance leadership skills. Within the next sixty days, a leadership workshop will be taking place for all directors, chiefs, and managers. This helps leaders to stay productive on top market developments. Companies are more than five times more likely to have a successful transformation when leaders have role modeled the behavior changes that they're asking their own employees. I feel if you strengthen leadership, it builds capacity for strength and growth. This concludes my report.
To the mayor, to the uh city council, to the administration, and to the wonderful people of the City of Harvey. My name is Joseph Winnington Jr. I'm the Director of Senior Services. Today, I prepared a brief report concerning the senior services department's accomplishments for this month. We had one seniors with an attitude of gratitude gathering in April with a uh a small group of seniors. But the weather was bad for them, it was thirty-two of them, but they did come out even in the rain. Uh we had thirteen line dancing uh groups throughout the week with a a group of a hundred and seventy-seven people participating. We're finding out as the senior services that uh wellness is what they want to do. They want to do something that's exercising and fun. We attended one single de-mayure celebration, and it was a large turnout, over seventy people attended this room here. We attended uh me, when I said we, I said me and my staff. We attended uh School District one fifty-two grandparents day, celebrate Brooks Middle School. Sharing information about the city and what we're doing for seniors. Uh we attended a one-south suburban college strategy planning community forum representative in the City of Harvey, sharing what seniors need in education and in this area of um for seniors. We hosted one Cook County clerk monitored gorgeous property after death forum at the City Hall here, where a large group turned out to realize that that over eighty percent of seniors do not have wills, have not even planned, even thought about making one. We attended one Jesse Jackson Senior Service Building for teaching people to deal with fire extinguishers, extinguishers workshops. We planted flowers with volunteers, there are a group of volunteers, seniors that would like to beautify the city, and we are constantly encouraging seniors that would like to work with us to beautify the city with flowers. We answered six to nine incoming calls, served forty-nine requests, completed twenty-five requests, returned thirty-eight calls. Emails, six emails, had five walk-ins, and closing, we had some updates, activities for seniors for June. We have two line dancing events for Tuesdays, the tenth and the seventeenth at ten o'clock, eleven o'clock, ten to eleven here at City Hall. One bingo launching for June twelfth, at twelve to three. We have one Juneteenth celebration, June eighteenth, from twelve to three. That is my report. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council and residents. My name is Charles Morey, the City Collector for the Department of Revenue. I am pleased to provide the monthly reports on behalf of the Revenue Department. I teamed up with the Water Department, the Building Department, and produced a more efficient and equitable way to receive transfer stamps on our online process. In the month of May, I approved a total of eighty-eight transfer stamps with thirty-two pending documentation. Proving our online payment process is successful. Additionally, we collected numerous past due water bills, being the highest one of twelve thousand six hundred eighteen dollars that goes back to twenty twenty. We have also recovered numerous fines, city building violations, the largest being seven five hundred dollars. The Revenue Department will continue to look into past due fines, fees, past due taxes, and collect and reduce the city's deficits. I have to pay to meeting old business owners, new business owners, as well as longtime Harvey residents who care about the future of Harvey. It is a new direction. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Before we go into, um this was actually the last report was for the department. So I was waiting until that time to inform everyone that the um the treasurer has placed on the on the desk a copy of a a report, um which we are going to submit to the um Comptroller's Office for verification, and then to the Finance Department, we're not Finance Department, Finance Committee. Um and it should be on the agenda for it's the twenty-third, I think it is?
Yes.
The twenty-third, uh maybe for the twenty-third, so it should be on that uh agenda at that particular point in time, once everything has been verified. And we are very appreciative to receive uh the uh report. Now, I'm gonna try to be brief. Um first, just to make sure, especially those that are watching, public comment is just that it is public comment, it is public opinion. Um it does not necessarily mean that what the commentators are saying is true. It just means that they have a right under the First Amendment to express themselves and their opinion regarding certain matters. So we want to make sure that everyone understands that, and we do respect those opinions um as well. But once again, those opinions have not been verified either. We have um there was there was one specific um comment, um talking about ways that we can get in touch with the community and let the community know certain things, um and was mentioning other ethnic groups as well, ethnicities. Uh first of all, if you um if you are interested in your water bill and you are a resident of Harvey who pays a water bill, there is a an insert that comes in your water bill every month that gives you an indication of what is going on, tells you what took place in the um council meetings. So you can read that insert so that you can find out exactly what's happening in the council meetings. But because we want people to be performed uh informed. Also, as our communications department also stated, we have the uh Harvey Newsletter. That letter is both in print and online. Um so you can also access um the newsletter in that way to find out more information about the city. In addition, um if there there are also, and we are having, I don't have the date for the next one, but our Community Solutions Meetings, uh the Community Solutions Meetings are another opportunity for us to come together to talk and discuss some of the issues that we have and try to figure out uh solutions. I I want to thank Cook County Animal Control, um also the Animal Welfare League and um Ward Daily from Bugs Angels to um for coming out and speaking with us about those particular issues, um because it is extremely important. When he was talking about things that we have as far as uh ethnicities, actually, this is other ethnicities, this is everyone. We have the Mayor's Cup, this is a three-on-three soccer event, um that will take place this uh month on June twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. Um there's a three-on-three soccer event for seven, it's seven divisions. Yeah, seven divisions. Um you can go online to find the information to sign up if you'd like to participate. The first prize is, I think a thousand dollars. Do we have a second five hundred this time? And the second prize is five hundred dollars. So um it's one of the things that we sponsor so that our youth can uh have something to do during the summer. I'm trying to strike out some of the things so that I have to address all of these. Oh, so here here it is. We would hope, I've gotten quite a few calls from uh from our senior population. And with everything that's going on and the benefit of this reality, I would hope that we can take it down a notch. Um because they are extremely concerned, and they're more so concerned about their own personal safety. Um I am going to just leave it at that because if I say anything else, it'll seem like I'm pointing fingers at one side or the other. I would just hope that we can bring that down. Um and so I want to address some of the other issues that could be addressed for that particular reason. Uh but I do want to um reiterate what our third work order said as far as the businesses are paying property taxes. Property taxes are Property taxes are the seeds of Harvey's business, because a portion of those taxes come to the city, not just to the city of Harvey, but they also come to the library district, the school district, the park district, and many other districts of the city. Harvey has fifteen taxing bodies. That doesn't mean Harvey taxes you, but we have fifteen taxing bodies, so I'm there. So it's also whether college, township, from rescue or baby, there's a variety of taxes that are in those property taxes. And when those businesses do not pay their property taxes, then it puts an extra burden on those other taxing bodies to figure out how to serve you without any money, plain and simple. So we need those businesses to pay, and we would like your support in letting those businesses know that they should pay their property taxes because we get a portion of that. All right, so, well, here comes the first one. First of all, I'll say happy Pride Month, this is June, it is Pride Month, and seeing that we have some of this from the LGBTQ plus community here, I want to make sure that I get it clear that in, in, while I'm accused of calling someone a pedophile, I never mentioned that person's sexuality, not that I called him a pedophile. He equivocates being a pedophile with being gay, because that is not something that I said, and it's not something that I believe in any shape, form, or fashion. Harvey is, and Harvey has been, a safe space for everyone who is a part of the community. And I stand with that community, and will continue to stand with that community, have always still with the community in more ways than you can imagine. And it just so happens that the person who's made a complaint about me, I represented that person as a lawyer for free. So if I had a problem with people being in the community, I, I think probably the first thing I wouldn't have done was represented someone for free, but at the end. Now, it is, it really insults, because once again, and this is part of what you get for being a C when the accusations come, but members of my family are also part of the community. And with my, members of my family and saying, wait a minute, you did what? Yeah, of course, they know it's not true, but the simple fact is, is that it makes them feel a certain way, and it makes them feel a certain way because it's being equivocated that being gay means being a pedophile. And that is not what that means. Now, in today's time where people in the community are under attack, you need as many people on your side as possible. You definitely do. And Harvey is, unfortunately for the rest of the world, we may have gone crazy on some things, I will admit, but some things we are steady on, and we have always been steady on our diversity. That's why we, we have so many different races and ethnicities and religions in this, in this city. We have so many people of diverse backgrounds and sexualities in this city. And unlike Chicago, where it becomes some of the most segregated, that has never really been the Harvey model. Harvey has actually been that place where people who could not find the equality that they needed in other places, they came to Harvey. And black people came to Harvey as well, because they couldn't find that equality in other places. So Harvey has always been that. We will always support that, and we will always support the gay, gay community. So hopefully that will put that to rest, and probably won't, because some people feel like they have, you know, just political motives, and they're using the community in order to move that agenda forward, but it has no place here, absolutely no place. And I say that because if there's anybody who watches this in the future, you can understand. Uh-uh, no, yeah. Now, that being said, Happy Father's Day, because that is coming up, and Happy Father's Day to all the fathers. I'm a dad, I'm a girl dad, and I'm proud to be a girl dad, love it, absolutely most wonderful thing. Some people ask me, should I have boys? I know, God didn't set it up that way, but he showed and blessed me when he gave me them girls. So, that's all I got to say on that, and then to all the other fathers, I hope you feel the same way for whether you have girls or boys. You know what? And let me go back, that just brought me to something else that I want to speak on, because with that LGBTQ E-plus issue, there's trans in there too. And there are some people who have those issues, and they have to deal with those issues, and they continually get attacked as well. Okay, I didn't have to bring this up, so I mean, this is right off the top, but the bottom line is, as I was thinking about sons and daughters, I just started thinking about those family members who have children who are trans, and they have to go through, the things that they have to go through, because society doesn't necessarily want to understand or recognize those children. So, I'm gonna try to leave that at that unless something else comes up. Happy Juneteenth, because the next time we see you, Juneteenth will have passed, and for those black people, Juneteenth is extremely important, and I'm glad to see that it is now a national holiday. I hope that we can, once again, party and party with peace, and we can celebrate what it truly means, because that freedom that was finally announced to those people who were in Texas as far as their being free, as late as it was, I wasn't there, of course, because I'm pretty sure they wasn't complaining when they got it, and they were happy enough. And finally, black people specifically were in a position where we will all declare free. Y'all know freedom ain't always free, but, you know, it's one step at a time, and we are building a perfect union. So, last but not least, I'm gonna do what I always do when things like this happen, and I hope that all of you do the same thing. First of all, I went to church the other week, and, you know, I can't get no peace, because somebody took pictures of me in church. And I had to contact my pastor and ask my pastor about that. He took pictures and they put it on Facebook, and that's okay, because maybe some other people will get saved as a result, you know? So that's all, you know? Hey, maybe they will, maybe they're running, maybe go to church, we go to church too. You know, but even if you don't go to church, remember now, you need to have a relationship. You say, sanctify, five, nine times, and have a relationship with God, okay? But, yeah, that goes to me too, for those coming in the morning, it goes to me too. It goes for all of us. And so on that note, I am going to leave it exactly there, and I'm gonna end up my time with a scripture.
Separation of church and state, man.
I'm going to enter, I am going to end my time with a scripture. Be merciful to me, O God, be merciful, because I come to you for safety. In the shadow of your wings, I find protection until the raging storms are over. I call to God, the Most High, to God who supplies my every need. He will answer from heaven and save me. He will defeat my oppressors. God will show me his constant love and faithfulness. I am surrounded by enemies who are like lions, hungry for human flesh. Their teeth are like spears and arrows. Their tongues are like sharp swords. Show your greatness in the sky, O God, and your glory over all the earth. On that note, that is Psalm fifty-seven, verses one through five. And on that note, now you see, they need it right. Peace can't get through. It just can't get through. But that's okay, because God will take care of him too. Amen? Amen? Come on here, amen? Amen? All right, there, there we go. He gonna handle that too. But, if there is nothing else for the good of the order, the chair will entertain motion to adjourn. Motion by the first and second by the sixth, or if they will signify by saying, all right, those are polling, very nice. God bless you all, and have a great week.